Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start with our invocation and pledge allegiance for our city manager.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing upon our endeavors and upon all present here today. May your love and grace continue to guide us in everything that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the city of America, and to the God of which we stand, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, and with eternal peace and harmony, for all and every one of you. We have a presentation by the Mission C I D.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we do have our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Chris Valdez, also with a gentleman doesn't need any introduction, Mr. Craig Verley. They have a presentation for the mayor and the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Salinas, Mr. Garza, Council, City Council members. I am Chris Valdez, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and alongside me, everyone knows, Mr. Craig Verley. On behalf of Dr. Ricardo Lopez, our Superintendent of Schools, it is our distinct pleasure and delight to be here this afternoon with you, to present to you this honor and distinction from the Texas Association of School Boards. You have been recognized for the partnerships and what you're doing for our Mission Boys and Girls. And so, on behalf of our superintendent schools and almost 16,000 boys and girls, our faculty and staff, and our campus principals, we thank you for the work that you're doing with our boys and girls and the partnerships that we have together. When you step up like that, you're stepping up for a noble cause. And so, this presentation, this plaque here says, "The award is presented to City of Mission for continuously standing up and supporting public schools in our community." So, thank you so much for all that you do, and just want to recognize all of y'all. And we look forward to future endeavors together, looking forward to your continued partnership and excellence, so that way we meet all the needs of our boys and girls here in Mission. So, congratulations to each one of you and to our city.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Want to step up with us? Roberto can take the picture.
Those haven't been taken. Don't need my ugly mug in it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Probably be the only picture of you. It would probably be the only picture of you, but if you would have. We do have a report from the Mission Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. As far as the chamber report, on Thursday, June 15, 2017, we held a ribbon cutting from one of our newest members, U.S. Renal Care, state-of-the-art facility, you know, sure to make a positive impact here in the Mission community. We had approximately 25 members in attendance at the ribbon cutting. On the same day, on Thursday, June 15, we had Farmers Insurance, Christine Chico, at 1512 East Griffin Parkway. We had the pleasure of celebrating her Farmers Insurance Agency opening. In attendance was Ms. Chico and her staff, as well as the city manager, the fire department, and some of our police department. We had approximately 60 people in attendance, so very well-attended. Upcoming events on Thursday, June 29, we are kicking off our mixers again, bimonthly mixers. I invite all of you. We're going to be hosting it at Bodega Tavern and Kitchen in McAllen. We've partnered up with one of our newest members, RG Vision Media, and I look forward to seeing everyone there. Following that, on Thursday, July 13, 2017, we're going to have a ribbon cutting for Texas National Bank at 501 North Sherry Road. You know, Texas National Bank has been a continued supporter of the Mission community, and we definitely thank them for choosing Mission for their newest location. Lastly, I've said it several times, on July 22, we have our second annual Mission Community BBQ Throwdown. We're going to have professional chef teams competing for BBQ, for a head-to-head, you know, competition, and we're going to crown a BBQ champion. We're going to have live music all evening, fun and games for children and adults, and registration is still open if anybody knows any BBQ teams, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is the department reports. You have them in your packet. If you all have any questions on those reports, don't hesitate to ask us now.
Mayor, there's no question. I'd like to put into form a motion to accept the department reports as presented in writing.
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second, to go ahead and approve the reports as presented? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. We have a presentation later.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and the general public here today. It is a pleasure to introduce a delegation that's with us here today. They represent our neighboring community of Miguel Aleman. With us today is the mayor, Rosi Coro. She has been, she's the newest administration here in Miguel Aleman. She reached out to us this past January and has visited us ever since, creating a partnership with us, and it's a pleasure to have them here today. We are becoming sister cities. We've got all of our documents in line, and the best of intentions to bring them on as our next sister city. And they're here today to say thank you to the council for the most recent conveyance of equipment that we've given to them, and so I'd like to, at this time, introduce the mayor of Miguel Aleman, Rosi Coro.
Muy buenas tardes. Es un placer para mí estar aquí con ustedes y sobre todo darles las gracias por ese gran apoyo que nos están dando con esa donación de vehículos que en realidad van a ser de mucha utilidad para nuestra ciudad de Miguel Aleman. Y quiero darles las gracias a todo el cabildo de aquí de la ciudad de Mission, en especial al señor Norberto Salinas, que para mí es de bendición, la verdad. Su amistad es de bendición, ese gran apoyo que nos da a nuestra ciudad. Muchísimas gracias, y quiero que tengan en su mente que en Miguel Aleman les recibimos con muchísimo cariño el día que gusten visitarnos, y de antemano le agradezco también que próximamente haremos la hermandad entre Mission y Miguel Aleman, que para los ciudadanos de ahí, yo como alcaldesa, es un gran honor el que nos permitan que seamos ciudades hermanas próximamente. Muchísimas gracias, y que este día sea de excelencia, y sobre todo de muchas bendiciones para todos y cada uno de nosotros. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
And Mayor and Council, also with us today to make a very special presentation is Mr. Kando Ontiveros. He's with Med Care. And I'd like to invite Kando to, please join me up here, as he will make a special presentation to the newest, or the up-and-coming sister city of Miguel Aleman. En este momento van a hacer una presentación, este, para hacerle entrega de llaves.
De parte de la compañía de ambulancias aquí de Mission, Texas. Con mucho gusto le presentamos esta ambulancia, que ha ayudado a rescatar muchas vidas aquí en el valle, y que siga rescatando más vidas en su lindo pueblo.
Muchísimas gracias. Muy agradecida. Mayor, they got a picture with...
Pass it over to her. For her.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Le agradezco mucho como quieras. Se lo voy a mandar. Yo me lo vendría. Si quieres, esperamos en el interior. Gracias. Muy agradecida.
I don't plant.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Sobre todo gracias.
I think I'm Ms. Norrie. We now go to ours. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Not having anything to do with our agenda today, but, okay. We'll go on to our public hearings, and we ask for Mr. Acevedo to come to the podium, and we'll start with 1.1A.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a 1.25 acre tract of land, more or less, out of the south, 10 acres of the north, 20 acres of Lot 254, John H. Sherry subdivision. The current zoning on the property is office building, C1, and the request is for neighborhood commercial, C2 zoning. The applicant is Villa Capital LLC, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 14, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located at the southwest corner of Sherry Road and Fox Run Drive. There was opposition during the P and Z meeting, and the concerns voiced were regarding the property values going down, that there was going to be no room for parking, and that they did not want traffic going into Fox Run. They were also concerned about a buffer, or the type of buffer that would be in place between the commercial and the residential component. The board unanimously recommended denial. However, staff is recommending approval, because the future land use map does have this zone as a general commercial area, which C2 definitely falls within, and also because just recently, there was a rezoning just further north, I would say, less than a quarter-mile north for the Gold's Gym that was approved to a C3, also abutting a residential subdivision. So, based on those facts, staff and our city manager are recommending approval. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? We have Fred Kurth. I'm sure you're in favor.
Well, sorry, Mayor. No.
Okay.
Fred Kurth, 2310 Fox Run. I think, if you recall back a few years when the north side developed, we worked closely with that developer and ended up with a really good solution that worked well for them and for the neighborhood. What we're concerned about, if we go to this neighborhood commercial zoning, it's going to allow a lot of things that we really don't want to be neighbors to. So, we're very concerned about allowing that change. We'd like to keep it C1. We would be glad to work with the developer, you know, on a lot of things that we could do within a C1, but definitely do not want to have the neighborhood.
You're saying that you're against, what part of the placita that you don't...
We don't, we're opposed to changing the zone from C1 to neighborhood commercial. We'd like to keep it C1.
C1 would allow them to build the, what they want to build?
No. No, they're not going to be able to do some of the things that they've said. They've showed us some renderings, and in those renderings, there were some things like restaurants and multiple-story, and if you lived right there, like where Candy Reed lives, two-story, you'd be looking right into their swimming pool. So, we just think it'd really be invasive into the neighborhood. You know, we've got a very quiet neighborhood, and we'd kind of like to keep it that way.
You don't want C2 or C3?
No, sir.
Or C3?
We want to stay with C1.
Just C1?
Yes.
So, what do you want them to do with that piece of property?
Well, you know, there's, on the north side, they're able to do, I think there's an insurance office there, there's developers' offices in there, things like that that seem to work well.
But, I mean, this is on north Sherry, right? On the north side of Fox Run?
It's just on the east side of Fox Run, and it's south of Fox Run Drive.
But it's right facing Sherry Road?
Correct.
Wouldn't you think that'd be commercial?
Well, C1 is commercial, it's just, it's a lower-use commercial.
Is that one across the street, C1?
It is.
So, you're saying that, who's the developer?
I may say here? Okay.
How are you this afternoon? I represent the developer, actually, the ones who did the preliminary.
What is it that you all want to do there?
The idea is to be C2, so the occupancy, which is also limited in C2, can offer to that area, which is so, so close to Griffin Parkway. I mean, things like maybe a haircut, actually some office space. I'll agree with the gentleman, as far as restaurant, perhaps that's not the best option, might not even be the best location, perhaps, of parking limitations. And the owner or the investor is aware of that, and actually said, well, okay, if they're inclined for a business, we can do some business, office space within the same little development. So, you could maybe even have a little mixed-use development. But it's just such a prime piece of property, I mean, the investor in itself, I mean, he looked at a lot of properties, at Enberg, Mission, McAllen, you know, and this particular location suited him well for what he had in mind of doing, which is, you know, just basic retail, things that would be beneficial to the surrounding neighborhood, including, you know, maybe even a dry cleaner, a small boutique, so many options that you have with C2. C1 is limited, basically.
C1 won't help you at all?
It won't, it won't help them, no, absolutely.
Okay, well, the recommendation from Planning and Zoning is to deny you.
Correct.
And I haven't read their minutes, but why, why don't you want to go C2? What is it that we're built there that you're afraid that they might build?
Correct.
Borrow what?
Well, C2 allows, and I don't know, maybe he can shed light on everything that it allows.
A C2 does not allow for a restaurant, Mayor. You would still need to get a conditional use permit to operate in a C2 if you wanted to open up a restaurant. So, that would still be something that would need to come in front of the city council for approval.
Yes.
It's just retail shops, like a dry cleaner, haircut place, a little mom-and-pop store.
That would be what, C1?
C2. C1 is just like a medical office or doctor's office, an attorney's office, it's limited to what you can build.
Mayor, if you look at the, if you look at the zoning around there, I mean, it's all yellow, which is residential, and it's just to put that right in the middle of it doesn't seem to be the thing to do.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Miguel Del Angel, I live in 2301 Fox Run. I just wanted to bring some more concerns about zoning, rezoning from C2 from C1. The initial drawings that they had, had an opening on Fox Run and also coming in off of Sherry. Right now, we have a very difficult time, and there's, I'm surprised there's not more accidents there, from vehicles turning in off of Sherry into Fox Run, traveling north, and other vehicles traveling south on Sherry, trying to turn into the Sycamore, the other location. Another concern we have is like the IHOP, them building a restaurant, the IHOP right down the road on Sherry, they have the overflow coming in and parking on that street that jets on the side. There's over 18 children that live there. We have peace of mind right now, letting them go outside and play with each other, you know, without being too concerned of the traffic, because we don't get too much traffic coming in, because if vehicles don't have any business coming into our neighborhood, there's no, there's no traffic. I think with those retail shops and the access off of Fox Run and the overflow that'll be parking in there, they'll be coming into the neighborhood and turning back around to come back, to come back out. Thank you.
So, you're against them?
I am against them going to C2. We've reached out with the developer, we told them, "We're open to a meeting to discuss your options," you know, "so both of us can be happy." I understand that that's a prime piece of property, and it will be developed, but we would like to have some input and work with them in conjunction, like we did on the north side of Fox Run. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I mean, addressing what the gentleman just said, I mean, we're absolutely in the best position to speak with the neighbors and try to locate and find the best solution, that's beneficial for both. I think, I mean, as far as the restaurant, that we already talked to the investor, that's a given, that's not going to happen. So, I mean, we can sit down with them as far as, you know, maybe, I mean, as far as the entrance on Fox Run, I mean, I don't know if that can or cannot be eliminated as far as the, through that, we need to go through planning and zoning. But what they're saying, I mean, I understand it, and their concern, which I think is mainly a restaurant or a high, or an occupancy that requires a high concentration of parking, is definitely an issue, and perhaps even keeping it at a single level, so they can maintain the privacy on the adjacent.
But you wouldn't settle for C1?
No, we would not settle for C1. It would have to be C2.
Did you need to say something?
My name is Tom Shepherd. I live at 2300 Fox Run, so I am in the neighborhood. We've got a number of people here that are concerned, that are fellow residents. I'm a real estate broker. I have been a broker for 30 years in the Valley. I am with Berkshire Hathaway Real Estate. It is a company that I am an owner in. And whenever, about four or five years ago, the property to the north wanted to change to C1, and they came in and created the office they have there, it was a very smooth process, and that building complements the area, I feel. It's a nice addition, it was done in a very quality manner. The C1 has been great for the neighborhood, it has not caused any issues with traffic flow, they do not have a direct access point to Fox Run, so that has helped us out as well. These are all things we feel are very important to our area, to the neighborhood, to preserving our values in the property to the south, and maintaining a C1 zoning on that will help ensure that. And going to C2 opens the door to a number of other possibilities, and that's the concern we all have. We all understand it needs to go to some level of commercial. It is already C1, and I believe that to be the best and highest use of that property for the community and for our neighborhood. And thank you for your time. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Lowell Hudson, who are at 2308 Fox Run. We went, I was very involved when we went through the original C1 for the other part. All that was, I guess, residential or wasn't zoned at the time, and that's why this other piece is zoned C1. And it was all, it was quite a lengthy discussion to get to that point. We offered our services, as was said earlier, to the developer, to sit down with us and say, "Okay, what do you need that wouldn't qualify for C1 that would go to C2?" And for that reason, we feel it is much easier for them to come to us as a continuous use permit on each of these, so that it can be gauged over whether it's one year, or two years, or whatever. And if it changes ownership, then you've got to start over. But we feel that is the best way to control what is happening, because the last thing you want to do is, all those people, one of the things about Fox Run is an old subdivision, but it's very much maintained its property values, and the last thing you want to do is hurt those property values, and also the safety of that neighborhood. So, I'm very much opposed to the C2, and would prefer they approach us with a C1 CUP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to recommend that we go ahead and accept the Planning and Zoning recommendation to deny, so maybe later on, they can get together with the property owner and the neighborhood and see if they can come to an understanding on what they can build there. So, my recommendation to the commission would be to deny and accept the recommendation from Planning and Zoning.
So, move, Mayor.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second to deny? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Against motion carries. So, Fred, as soon as you can, meet with them and see if you all can work this thing out.
Mayor, I have a quick question. How long has that property been zoned C1? Because I know it's...
Since I've been here.
A long time. So, you know, it's been, it was more than likely purchased as a C1, so that I don't think that there was any surprises.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go on to item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of a 0.65 acre tract of land of Meadow Creek Country Club, face 2A subdivision. The property is currently zoned PUD AOP, Planned Unit Development Agricultural Open Permanent, and the request is to rezonate to PUD C2, Planned Unit Development Neighborhood Commercial. The applicant is Olaguer Bauza, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 14, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located at the southeast corner of 1 Mile South Road and Inspiration Road. There was public opposition during the P and Z meeting. The concerns voiced were in regards to the area not being suitable for commercial. Some of the residents also mentioned that it was going to take away from their view of the golf course, something that they were sold and promised when they purchased the property. The residents also had a petition where people were in opposition of the rezoning request. Everybody within the 200-foot radius signed that petition, as well as other people from within the community. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request?
Favor.
Mm-hmm. Anybody in favor or against this request?
Against. Against.
Against? Anybody against this request? One of the problems that we have here is that the people that are against are not here, they're up north, and I don't think it's going to be fair for us to act on this item right now, because I do want to give those people a chance to speak for themselves. So, I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and skip this item for a later date, or deny, however you all want to work it out, but I do want to give those people a chance to be able to come and have their say. There are too many of them. I mean, it's a bunch. So, that would be my recommendation. I just don't think it's fair for them to be out and act on it.
Are we going to allow the...
Are you going to allow the ones that are here, Mayor?
You do have some that are against, Mayor, who are here present today, Mr....
We can allow them to speak, but I just don't want to have any action on it.
As you remember, back in November, this place was full of people from Meadow Creek, and now that we've moved it to the summertime, they're, I'm the only one left to represent them. But if you would push this off till November, when everybody's here, then I think we could settle it.
I'd like to do that myself. I don't know about the council. I want to give them an opportunity to be here when we go ahead and act on this.
On June 14, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located at the southeast corner of One Mile South Road and Inspiration Road. There was public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The concerns voiced were in regards to the area not being suitable for commercial. Some of the residents also mentioned that it was going to take away from their view of the golf course, something that they were sold and promised when they purchased the property. The residents also had a petition where people were in opposition of the rezoning request. Everybody within the 200-foot radius signed that petition as well as other people from within the community. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor, against this request?
Favor.
Mm-hmm. Anybody in favor, against this request?
Against.
Against.
Against? Anybody against this request? One of the problems that we have here is that the people that, that are against are not here, they're up north, and, and I don't think it's going to be fair for us to, to act on this item right now because I do want to give those people a chance to speak for themselves. So I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and skip this item for a later date or deny, however you all want to work it out, but I do want to give those people a chance to be able to come and say, have their say. There are too many of them. I mean, it's a bunch. So that would be my recommendation. I just don't think it's fair for, for them to be out and act on it.
Are we going to allow the-
Are you going to allow the ones that are here, Mayor?
You do have some that are against, Mayor, who are here present today. Mr.?
We could, we can allow them to speak, but I just don't want to have any action on it.
As you remember, back in November, this place was full of people from Meadow Creek and now that we've moved it to the summertime, they're, I'm the only one left to represent them. But if you would push this off till November, when everybody's here, then I think we could settle it.
I'd like to do that myself. I don't know about the council. I, I want to give them an opportunity to be here when we go ahead and act on this. If you want.
So is that what we're going to do or?
That's what, I don't know. How do you all feel? I mean, you all need to-
I think it's only fair that they be here and have a chance to voice their opinion.
I'm okay with that, Mayor. I'm okay with that, but I think there's still some other people that are here and against.
Anybody who's here against the rezoning? Okay.
Do you all want to say some, something today or do you want to wait till November?
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, they're going to wait till November.
And you do have the-
Yes, and you all can speak in favor, but I do want you all to know that we are going to be acting on this in November. A ver?
Claro que sí, sir. Thank you, sir.
A ver?
Hello, I'm Loris Bausa from 1300 Circle Drive.
Yes.
We, well, we have the approval for the previous meeting and also the people that is here is not in the 200. You know, most of the people that is here is not around our area. So I think there's only a couple that are affected about that. Also, the golf course is ours, so, you know, the other thing is, for us to build that there, we already have a commercial things in the front, like Dollar General, and then Inspiration is going to be wide, so it's a lot of traffic over there, so it's going to be commercial. It's not like sounds or noise or, you know, that stuff. So the only thing is that most of the people that is here, they live in the community, but no in 200 feet. So the, the one, the, the person that just walked here, yeah, he, he is affected, but that's the only one.
Thank you.
I'm Victor Trevino, representing Mr. Bausa. I guess what she's trying to say is that the neighbor to the north that, that she, they spoke to already and they didn't get to an agreement, but they gave them a 20-foot buffer, so to have a space between the commercial property and the residential property. And she was trying to say that if the 200, the 200-feet radius from this property are present, maybe that, maybe we can make something.
Thank you.
We'll do that in, go ahead.
Mayor, Council, I'm representing Victor Trevino with South Texas Infrastructure Group. This item was before you guys several months ago, and I understand whatever direction the mayor and the council want to take, that's it, but we'd like to say our piece first. The neighbors that were concerned, as you remember, there were several parcels that we had out for rezoning in the area. The only concern, and, and the neighbors that are directly on the south side of this property were the only neighbors that were, that were against this property. And the only concern that those two neighbors had was the, I guess their site, their site viewed to the golf course. And basically, that was a concern that they had brought up at the time of the public hearing is basically their site. They had no problem with the, the actual zone itself except for the site. In other words, the, they were not going to be able to view the golf course as they used to. And I just want to reiterate that my client owns the golf course. He bought 163 acres, pretty expensive to basically put, put back into shape. And we do respect whatever the mayor and the council wanted to do as far as direction with, with this, with this item, but those were the only two neighbors that we had on that property and we came to a conclusion that they have no problem with the commercial site. They, they're okay. It's just a side to the golf course. So working with the developer, working with the neighbors, we basically talked into leaving a 20-foot strip in between both of them. And that was, that was basically the last discussion that we had with the, the neighbors.
Well, we got a word that they wanted to apply over here to this meeting and there's so many of them that, that they decided and asked us if we could wait, asked me if I could wait till November and they, they wanted to be here.
Okay.
I think that everything that you all have asked for in the, in the golf course, you all gotten approved, you know?
As far as the zoning? Yes, sir.
Everything, so.
I think so, yes.
I don't, I don't think that everything-
The rezoning throughout the golf course? We've already gotten all the rest of them.
All the items that you have brought to?
No, the zoning, the rezoning.
Julio, everything that you all have brought, we have approved. One item is not going to kill us, you know? I'm asking just one item-
Sure.
Because nobody's here. And I'm, I'm going to stand by those, those people that are not here and I'm going to wait for them to be here in November. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
And then we'll act on it. So if everybody understands where I'm coming from.
Mayor, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, they're not in the motion. So, so move, Mayor.
Second.
I have a real quick question.
I have a comment to make for a second.
My question is, it's already been through P&amp;Z. What would the action be? Would, would they have to go back to P&amp;Z?
Mayor and Council, since there is a recommendation from the planning and zoning currently on the table, if the council doesn't take action and there's a consensus that no action be taken, this item in effect dies. So it would have to be taken in front of the planning and zoning again in November. That's correct.
Before November.
I'm sorry, or, or before November, correct.
And if we table it?
The problem with tabling is that it wouldn't be for the next meeting, so if it doesn't come back on the agenda, it, in essence, dies as well.
Okay. So the item would have to go back to P&amp;Z.
That's correct. And if the council decides to take action and say deny, they would have to wait six months to reapply.
So the best thing to do is just take no action.
Whatever the council wishes to do at this point.
We need to finish the public hearing, Mayor.
I know.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you doing that. I am one of the problem people who are not within 200 feet of that particular thing, so I appreciate you all letting everybody speak. The thing with that is if you look on the, the picture, it looks like that's the green right there, so the part that they want to zone is right where the green is. So my concern is it's been the, the AOP, the Agricultural Open Permanent, ever since, I believe since they developed the golf course, and it's only since they purchased that property, the golf course, that they're trying to cut out areas. The people who play golf, I mean, that's one of the, the nicer holds, like right along the street it used to be, but that's going to really damage the golf course. That's what our concern is, you know, the entire family plays golf. Whether or not, you know, the, the people who are here, yeah, most of us don't live right there. That's a very small area, so I, I do appreciate you guys postponing it until the people who live in that area can come over and, you know, speak themselves. So, thank you.
The recommendation is that to anything?
Okay, yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So the recommendation would be?
No action.
No action?
Second.
Do we have to take?
No, wait, it's just-
We need to close the public hearing, Mayor.
We need to close the public hearing so we can determine no action.
Well, there's no action. So the public hearing is closed. Nobody else has come to the podium, so if you have no action, then we'll go ahead and bring it back to, to, to November. Right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
See. I'm kind of, I'm kind of hard of hearing. I just wanted to make sure you put this off till November.
Yes.
I guess I'm-
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't have to take any action, right? We just go ahead and don't act on anything and we'll go to item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive, for three drive-through lanes and one ATMs for banking services for Texas National Bank at-
Kirvenada.
At Texas National Bank, 501 North Sherry Road, Lot 1, Hoffland Subdivision.
The property is Zoned C4 and Texas National Bank is the applicant. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 14, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit for the drive-through service lanes. The site is located 200 feet north of East Fourth Street along the west side of Sherry Road. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and the city manager are recommending approval for one year, subject to compliance with landscaping, building, and fire codes, the acquisition of a business license, and that CUP not be transferable to others. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the request.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
And the ordinance number?
It's number 4525.
Okay. We do need a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance 4525.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
I just wanted to congratulate Texas National for a beautiful building, just a-
Item D.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and non-site consumption of alcoholic beverages at La Mitilada Mission. The address is 200 North Bryan Road, Suite 105, being the west 425 feet of Lot 1 Storage Depot, Bryan's subdivision. The property is Zoned C3 and the applicant is Del Norte Business Ventures LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 14, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject is located near the corner of Bryan Road and East First Street along the east side of Bryan Road. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff and the city manager are also recommending approval for one year. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a drive-through?
No, Mayor, it's a little, a small, little restaurant-style retail. They have four chairs with, I mean, four tables with four chairs. Most of their business is for drive-through or for pickup and what they want to do is they, they want to allow the, the people that go in there to, to drink a beer.
Okay. We do have anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve and also approve ordinance 4526.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. We do have, item 2.1 is the city council minutes that we had on June 12. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Do have item 3.0 to go on to 3.1 to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes for the Citizens' Advisory Committee that we had on May 9 of 2017, Spear Memorial Library on May 16 of 2017, and Planet and Zoning Commission on May 24 of 2017, and Mission Historical Museum on May 15 of 2017. We do need a motion to approve the acknowledgement of those minutes.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.1, Mr. Rosario.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is a homestead exemption variance for 1.3 acre tract of land out of Lot 17-1, West Addition to Sherland Subdivision. The property is owned AOI and the applicant is Ricardo Salazar. Mr. Salazar is a, is a, has purchased the property and he wants to build a single-family home, their own, and with the homestead exemption variance, the applicant is, is able to save on the engineering, the park fees, and the store capital recovery fees. Staff is recommending approval for the homestead exemption variance, subject to Mr. Salazar dedicating 20 feet of right-of-way along One Mile South. The staff and the city manager are recommending approval. This matter is now before you.
This is a homestead exemption. We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the exemption.
So move, Mayor. It's presented. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.2 is a final plat approval of Los Cabos subdivision Phase 3, being a one, a 4.2 acres out of 13.9 acres out of Lot 72 and 82, John H. Sherry subdivision. The property is owned PUD. The developer is Hunt Valley Development LLC and the engineer is Hafn Associate. This is a 38 residential lot subdivision. There is two common areas because there's a gas line that passes through this subdivision. A store capital recovery fee in the amount of $7,600 was paid to the city. The water rights has, have also been conveyed over to the city. Staff and the city manager are recommending approval. This matter is now before you.
Before you move forward, Jaime, just to make a correction. It is 13.90 acres totaling a total of 38 residential lots, correct?
Correct. 13.9 acres.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the request.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.3.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.3 is a final plat approval of a replat of lots 3 and 4, Stewart Plaza subdivision, being at 3.057 acres of land and all of lots 3 and 4, Stewart Plaza subdivision. The property is Zoned C3 and the developers Cantadas Enterprises and the engineers Vanguard Engineering. What you have here, Mayor, is two commercial lots that are being split up into 17 commercial lots. The property is located at the southwest corner of Expressway and Stewart Road. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. This matter is now before you.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation.
Going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.4, approval of Resolution 1511.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.4 is the approval of resolution for the City of Mission, Texas, approving the cooperation with the city served by AEP to review the AEP Texas request for an adjustment to its energy efficiency cost recovery factor and hiring the legal and consulting services to negotiate with AEP. And this is the, a resolution to authorize the hiring of the law firm of Lloyd Roslinck for the consultants and negotiating the, the rates. And the city will not incur any liability or payment for the rate case expenses and staff is recommending approval of this resolution at this time.
We do need a motion to approve this resolution, 1511.
Going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
4.5.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.5, authorization to award bid to COCO payment services on as a basis. We receive four bid responses, award bid to Valley Striper in lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications in the amount of 15, 15 cents per square feet with 0% first renewal increase. Estimated cost is about $100,000. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
Going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 46.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have item 4.6, change order number two for additional sidewalk and wheelchair ramps to be constructed on the south side of Mall 2 between Morphew and Conway Avenue to add sidewalk and wheelchair ramps on both sides of Mall 2 Road project. Additional 20 working days requested to construct. Change order, the change order amount is $93,773 with 16 cents, which is 1.64% of the original contract, which only the city will pay $927.73. That is 1% of the AFA with Techstat. The contractor is an IOC company and staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation of the city manager and staff to approve the request of $927.73. That's our chair.
That's correct, sir. This is for the change order to add sidewalks and ramps.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I want to commend the staff or whoever is responsible for getting the extra $100,000 for the sidewalks on the south side of the 2-mile line. So, you all need to be commended for that. All it costs is $927. So, thank you all very much. And 4.7.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4.7, approval in an local agreement between City of Mission and the Hidalgo County Regional Mobility Authority, which is the HCRMA. The highway improvement to 365 tollway from Anzalduras Bridge to Sherry Road. The improvements will adjust and relocate the water and sewer lines. The city is responsible for the design, the labor, and the cost of the relocation of the existing utilities. The HCRMA will reimburse the city 50% of eligible cost. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve the staff and the city manager's recommendation.
I move to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Hi.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.8.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4.8, authorization to engage South Texas Infrastructure Group for professional engineering services related to the Hidalgo County Regional Mobility Authority for the 365 tollway. The services include preparation of survey, plans, specifications, estimates, and management for the water and sewer lines relocation. The project located near the GSA facility, Anzalduras Bridge, which will cost $86,669. The RMA will reimburse the city 50% of the design and the construction. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do have, the cost is $86,669, and we do want to recommend the staff and the city manager's recommendation.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
4.9.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. 4.9 is recommendation to award bid to A1 Insulation for Housing Assistance Program Phase 16-2. This bid, Mayor and members, is for reconstruction of four homes and rehabilitation of one project. We received five bid responses. We're recommending to award bid to A1 Insulation, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Total cost is $225,800 for reconstruction and $23,900 for rehab, for a grand total of $249,700. The Citizens Advisor Committee is recommending approval. So is staff, and now the item is before.
Okay. Recommendation from Citizens Advisor Committee and the staff and city managers recommends the approval. We do need a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 410, Chief Dominguez.
Mayor, City Council, item 410 is the approval of resolution authorizing the Mission Police Department to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of state right-of-way to the Texas Department of Transportation for Turbo Spring Triathlon event. Mayor, Council, this event is coordinated by Camilo Garcia from Walleye's Bikes and Team Turbo. There's three events, a swimming event, biking, and running. This requires a closure of, temporary closure of, three roadways, Bryan Road, Sherry, and Military Road. The event is for July the 2nd at 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The staff and the city manager's office are recommending approval.
Okay, so we do need a motion to approve the recommendation from staff and city manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 411.
And that was Resolution 1512, Mayor.
Resolution 1512.
I'm sorry. Do you need a motion to approve Resolution 1512?
I move to approve. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Mayor, City Council, item 4.11, authorization to purchase a P25 digital communication system and 100 portable radios via state-approved HGAC contract, contract number RA05-15. Our current system, Mayor and City Council, is over 21 years old, our communication system. This new system, P25, will cost $2,128,759.89. There's nine yearly installments, $279,570.4. The first payment being due two years from today, in June of 2019. That first installment will be covered by the Mission Police Department Drug Fund. The vendor is Motorola Solutions. Obviously, this communication system is to obviously benefit the police department, the fire department, and our sanitation department, with growth for other city departments as well. Staff and the city manager's office are recommending approval of this item.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and approve the staff's recommendation and the city manager's recommendation?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Is this the one that has the regional capability?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 412.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to award bid for the Madero Water Tower Rehabilitation Project. The City of Mission has accepted an open two-bid responses for this project. Staff recommends awarding to Pittsburgh Tank and Tower, which is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specification. We have the letter of recommendation attached by Melton and Hunt. The total base bid amount for this project is of $222,540. Staff and city manager recommends approval for this project, Mayor.
Do we need a motion to approve the request?
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 414.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members. Item 4.13 is the authorization to purchase equipment via buyboard contract, 515-16, for the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department is seeking to purchase an asphalt paper utility compact roller at a cost of $243,203.43. Also, a Bobcat compact excavator and a truck loader with attachments at a cost of $164,284.72. The total cost for the overall equipment is of $407,488.15. Again, all this equipment is going to be purchased via buyboard, via state-approved contract. Staff and city managers recommend approval for this purchase of equipment, Mayor.
Okay, the first number is wrong, 243?
Yes, sir. It's 243,203.43.
200 what? Okay, the first number said 22. Okay, we did, they have a motion and a second?
Second.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Second.
To approve the recommendation from staff and city manager, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
414.
Mayor, Council, item 414, seeking authorization to accept Walmart Corporation grant for the amount of $4,500. The funds were to purchase a drone to assist emergency incidents and fire investigations, replace a video camera system for a fire safety trailer, and equipment for the community emergency response team. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do have, we need a motion and a second.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
To approve, the staff and city manager's approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 415, seeking authorization to finance the purchase of a fire apparatus from Municipal Fire Apparatus Specialist, LLC, through preferred third-party lender. The City Council approved the purchase of a fire apparatus on January 27, 2017. The fire apparatus is currently under production under Municipal Fire Apparatus. The amount to be financed is $530,305.95 for seven years, for seven years with an annual payment of $84,302.21 per year. The first payment will be on June 1, 2018. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the staff and city manager's recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. 416.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.16, 416 is a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the Mission Redevelopment Authority on behalf of the Reinvestment Zone Number 1 City of Mission, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $17,500,000, and making certain findings related thereto. This bond is for two main purposes, for two purposes. One is for the refinancing of our '05 and '09 bonds, and that's for the amount of $12 million. And the second purpose is $5.5 million for the construction of Anzalduras Highway Phase 2 project for the wastewater and water trunk lines. Like I said, this amount is not to exceed $17,500,000.
What's the resolution number? 15?
1513.
1513. We do need a motion to go ahead and accept the recommendation.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
417.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.17 is the authorization to award contract for third-party administrator. GAF Financial, our insurance agent, is recommending that we continue with Blue Cross Blue Shield. This is for medical and pharmacy benefits, and staff and city manager are recommending approval.
We do need a motion to approve the staff and city manager's recommendation.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
419. Ms. Bella? Tax collection report.
Afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 418 is for the tax collections report for May 2017. The total tax levy at the end of May was $20,46,874.32, and the amount of collections as of May 31st was $18,991,705.54, which constitutes 94.74% of the total tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation from staff and city managers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 419.
419 is the approval of an amendment to interlocal cooperation agreement for tax assessment and collection between the City of Mission and Hidalgo County. This amendment is for the tax assessment and collections. It's a 5% increase from $72,936 to $76,572. The last increase was in October of 2014. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion and a second to approve the recommendation.
I move for approval. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 421.
420 is for the authorization to solicit proposal for depository bank services. As per City's Local Government Code, Section 105, the city must request proposals for depository bank services. Frost Bank is our current depository service, and our contract terminates at the end of November 2017. Our investment policy states our depository contract must be selected every four years. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
The recommendation is to go out for bids?
Yes.
Okay. We do need a motion to go out for bids.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 421 is the attached, approval of the attached budget amendments. We have four. The first is in the general fund in the fire department, a reclassification of $20,000. Funds are being reallocated within the fire department for fire equipment that is necessary. In the streets department, we have $460,000 to allocate funds for road material and machinery and equipment for the new Streets Improvement Task Force transferred in from sanitation fund. In the sanitation fund, we have expenditures of $625,000 to allocate funds for the transfer out to the streets fund and for machinery and equipment for the purchase of a Bobcat excavator. And finally, in the designated purpose fund, we have $4,500 to allocate for grants received from the Walmart Corporation. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation from staff and city manager. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 4.22 is the May 2017 financial statements. The adjusted beginning balance was $51,715,508. Our total revenues were $5,964,196, and our total expenditures were $10,179,763, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of $47,499,941. Our total assets were $154,275,520. Our total liabilities are $62,263,285,285, and our total net assets are $89,768,233. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Adjustment ending funding balance, 47.499?
Yes, for all funds.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve the staff's recommendation with the city managers.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 423.
423.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Item 4.24, sorry, is recommendation for authorization on a surplus, on surplusing one vehicle. A 2007 Ford F-15 used by the animal control was involved in a vehicular collision. After inspected by the insurance adjusters, it was deemed a total loss. Mayor, Council, in order to transfer the ownership to the insurance, vehicle needs to be declared surplus. Both staff and city manager approve.
Okay, would you motion to surplus the truck?
So moved.
I move to approve.
There was a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.